To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Swicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is a special proclamation.
Whereas according to the U.S. Department of Justice, an estimated 800,000 children are reported missing each year, and whereas on average approximately 2,000 children are reported missing to law enforcement agencies daily, and whereas 58,200 of these children are victims of non-family abductions, and more than 200,000 are the victims of family abductions, and whereas the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children exists as a resource to help prevent child abduction and sexual exploitation, help finding missing children, and assist victims of child abduction and sexual exploitation, their families, and the professionals who serve them, and whereas this special day is a time to remember those children who are missing and give hope to their families. Now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim May 25th, 2013, as Missing Children's Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the protection of children by taking time to educate children about child abduction and sexual exploitation, and how to respond and seek help from law enforcement, social services, and organizations such as the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. And witness whereof, I've here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed since 13th day of May 2013. Sign, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's my pleasure, we have practically the entire management team of Valley Communications Center in the back room there to accept this proclamation. Yvonne drew the short straw, so she's going to come up and accept this. Please. Yvonne, you're welcome to say a few words if you'd like to.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for the proclamation. As the Valley Communications or the 911 Center for this area, and several years ago, we went through a process to become partners with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, excuse me, in the interest of assuring that the children in our communities remain safe. With the recent news, especially in Cleveland, I think everybody will agree that this is a cause we can't afford to ignore. And we have planned an event, a Youth Education and Safety Fair that's taking place this Saturday at the Renton Community Center from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and we've joined with others in the 911 community, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Puget Sound, and the City of Renton Police and Fire Departments. And it's a great event that will be educating parents and children about all the issues surrounding children's safety. So, we appreciate your effort, and it will contribute to their success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne, and we urge everybody to attend this fair. It's going to be a great educational piece for people. I also want to take this opportunity for, I mean, of course, the council's well aware of this, but people at home don't know that we're part of a consortium that owns the Valley Communication System, and we've got the most dynamic dispatch center in the region by, I mean, I can say clearly throughout the state, but well beyond that. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person.
I have to add, I was, unfortunately, or fortunately, I was working before Valley Com was ever formed, so I've seen it grow, and here about two weeks ago, had the opportunity with a bunch of retired Renton police officers to take, go out and take a tour of it, and I'd seen it, they hadn't, and it is phenomenal, the job that they do, and I'll be very candid, we have the best dispatch system, the people are dedicated, and there's a couple of them even recognize me, you know, that's scary, isn't it? But they do a fan, they've always done a fantastic job, but we watched them, and they are so professional and so good, that we are fortunate in this community to have such dedicated people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Person. Thanks, Yvonne.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to a public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Raquel Timmons, I'm a senior planner with the Department of Community and Economic Development, and I am here to present staff's recommendation on this year's update for school impact fees. School impact fees are only assessed on new development, and those fees are used to fund capital facilities, but not for operations or maintenance. They are used to help offset the impact of growth on those new school facilities, and the fees are based on assessment of each district's capital facilities plan. Staff is recommending the adoption of a resolution which would enter into local agreements with each of the school districts that serve the city. Additionally, we are recommending the adoption of two ordinances, one which would provide provisions for the waiver of claims for refunds, payments under protest, and appeals, as well as the amendment of requested fee amounts based upon the assessment of each district's capital facilities plan. The Isiqua School District is requesting an impact fee increased of $170, resulting in a 370, or $3,000, I'm sorry, $738 fee for new single-family homes. The Kent School District is requesting a continuation of last year's fee, which is a $5,486 fee for single-family homes, and a $3,378 fee for multifamily homes. The Renton School District is requesting a $3 increase for single-family homes, resulting in a fee of $6,395, and a $34 increase for multifamily units, resulting in a fee of $1,308. And if there are no objections to these recommendations, we are asking that tonight there be a reading of the Finance Committee Report, which you should have, followed by the adoption of the resolution, and the first reading of both of the ordinances mentioned.
Okay. Any questions of Raquel? So this is a public hearing, do we have any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
I have received no correspondence.
Okay. Raquel, was that the completion here's? Okay. We do have one person signed up to testify at this public hearing, Gwen Escher Drodowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Miss Council President, members of the council. My name is Gwen Escher Drodowski, I'm the Planning Administrator for the Kent School District at 12033 Southeast 256th Street. I'm here to speak in support of the district's 2012 Capital Facilities Plan adopted by the district's Board of Directors in July 2012. First of all, Kent is the fourth largest district in the state with over 27,000 students and an annual budget of over $340 million. Only Seattle, Spokane, and Tacoma school districts are larger than Kent School District. The district serves residents of the City of Covington, a large portion of the City of Kent, a smaller portion of newly annexed areas to the City of Renton, and parts of Auburn, Black Diamond, Maple Valley, Sea-Tac, and of course, unincorporated King County. The portion of the City of Renton served by Kent School District includes the area known as the Anthony Annexation, as well as the section of the Benson Hill Annexation located south of 55th and southeast 192nd, and east of 124th Avenue Southeast. We also serve numerous residents with Renton addresses in unincorporated King County, most significantly in the Fairwood area. Second, the Capital Facilities Plan, annual adoption of the school district Capital Facilities Plan updates a portion of the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan for the City of Renton. I'm just going to briefly mention a couple of significant projects that are included in our Capital Facilities Plan. The new Panther Lake Elementary School opened in 2009 and replaced the previous school known, still known as Panther Lake Elementary School at 208th and Benson. The new school increased the capacity for about 104 more students. The previous Panther Lake Elementary School is no longer utilized as a school, it was replaced, but it has been held in reserve for the past few years in the event of flooding in the valley and the potential need to move students up the hill should that flood event occur. So far, it has not, but we still do own that property at the corner of Benson and 208th. Kent Meridian High School and Kent Lake High School had some additional classroom and gym space added, and Kent Meridian also serves as the host campus for the Kent Technology Academy for qualifying high school students. Students who complete the Tech Academy Program at Mill Creek Middle School may also advance to the program at Kent Meridian High School. Kent Phoenix Academy serves students in grades nine through 12, and is also the home of a Refugee Transition Center. The plan includes two future elementary schools, a replacement school for Covington Elementary School, and what is now planned as future elementary capacity at two existing schools that will increase capacity at the elementary school level. There are no impact fees assessed or collected for middle school or high school. We have sufficient capacity at those two levels, so the impact fees are only for elementary Last but not least, the proposed impact fees of the continuation of the $5,486 fee for single-family and $3,378 for multifamily is, reflects a voluntary reduction that the school district makes to the formula for the capital facilities impact fee formula. Without the voluntary adjustment, the single-family fee would be 10,000, a little over $10,000, and the multifamily fee would have been about 5, 700, excuse me, about $7,500. So that voluntary adjustment represents a significant savings to the builder, and the impact fee in general represents a savings to the existing taxpayers, so that there is a little bit less subsidy given to the new development. I recognize that impact fees can sometimes be a little bit misunderstood, but the impact fees that have been collected in Kent School District have been used very wisely, and since 1993, only, it is only used for new capacity. I would like to take just a moment to thank Raquel Timmons, she is a delight to work with, we really appreciate her expertise, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't believe, council, any questions, so thank you very much. Was there anybody else that wanted to testify in regards to this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Would the public hearing be closed?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that the public hearing be closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a resolution and two ordinances that'll be coming up later in the meeting. Thank you, Raquel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next is audience comment, we have a couple people sign up to address the council, please, when I call your name, come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes to address the council, we have a nice new, larger timer with lights on top for you to keep your eye on, so you know where you are.
Ooh.
So, first to test this new light system is Paul Olet.
Change the timer so I could see it, right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my, my name is Paul Olet from Renton, resident for 40 years, my comments will be relatively short tonight. Last Monday's meeting, council meeting, was very cordial, and I am sure it was a pleasant change for all of you that were present, especially from some of the previous public discussions that were held in these chambers in the recent past. I trust that the members that were absent, however, had time to view the video. I was prepared to wait and see what KCLS Millahaw would provide for the additional entrance to their resemital. That was the basis of my comments last week, was relative to the additional entrance to the bridge. But after reviewing Mr. Covington's email reply of May 8th, well, basically correcting the comment that I had made in a memo or an email to the mayor, that I was thankful that you had directed KCLS to provide the entrance. Mr. Covington, I applaud Mr. Covington wanting to be quite legally and politically correct, however, it leads me to believe that the administration may not force the issue, especially after rereading Mr. Patechek's reply, as requested by Ms. Hagishiyama, and he is not an architect or an engineer. It appears that the council members did not understand the issue enough to refute his statements. His statements basically were that KCLS would consider the request, but noted that a large crossbeam is located in the area where the new door is being proposed. As I pointed out last week in my sketches that I showed out, that this is not a hindrance, only an opportunity for innovation by an architect or an engineer. You see, Mr. Mayor, as a professional engineer, I know that additional bridge entrance could be achieved without difficulty by simply moving the interior wall of the vestibule over to column, to the column line, which frees the additional entrance underneath the bracing. If we wait for KCLS and Millahaw to come up with a reason why they cannot do it, as they stated in their 424 memo, it's a middle of the schematic documents, and I quote, "It appears that pedestrian bridge is not ADA compliant." By making such a misleading statement like, "The existing pedestrian bridge slope is approximately 1 to 40, less than required 1 to 20, and therefore is not a ramp." Mr. Mayor, it's not a ramp, it's a walking surface, just like a sidewalk. Or the structural implications in the same memo, which follows Mr. Patechek's logic, that the bracing is in the way. All that is needed is a little architectural innovation, we should not wait and see what they do. After spending years as a consultant to the Postal Service, and many of those years in managing upgrades to postal facilities for ADA compliance, we know a little bit about the handicap regulations. You can send your engineers to check the grades of the bridge if you want to, but that bridge is ADA compliant. In conclusion, we believe that the city fully intends to incorporate the additional bridge entrance. We believe what you said, Mr. Mayor. You only need to be aware of what KCLS may try to do, since they have been less than honest in the past. That is why we ask that you make copies of this schematic design submitals available to the citizens, as well as the revised KCLS project breakdown for independent review of the preliminary project budget by outside consultants. Make that available to us, so we can help you analyze those things. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Next is Dave Beeden.
I'm Dave Beeden, B-E-E-D-O-N, I live in Renton. I'd like to ask a question to the city attorney people that are present tonight concerning the ILA between Renton, City of Renton, and King County Library System. The ILA that exists right now was signed in July 2011, I believe it was, and it's, it mentions under Section 7, potential library locations, and refers to two addresses on South 3rd Street, which of course, don't mean anything anymore. So I guess I want to ask a question, does it make any sense, in light of the fact that the voters approved or forced an approval of the Cedar River Library location for the downtown library, to retain those potential library locations in the ILA? Because the ILA says itself, it's the sole legal authority for all this business. So I'm concerned that we have an ILA that might be considered misleading or out of date, or maybe there's some legal term that would better describe that, and since the, I don't think the vote itself that occurred last August said anything specific about superseding the ILA, but I don't know for sure. So, what's the city attorney's position?
Excuse me, Mr. Beeden, we won't have the city attorney making an interpretation here from the floor, but we'll take those questions that you've posed and try to come up with answers to that.
Okay, can I give someone my email address?
Oh, absolutely.
Can I do that right now, or should I write?
Yeah, you can write it down and give it to the city clerk if she doesn't have that.
Okay, I'll do it in a little bit. Anyway, that's, that's what I wanted to ask about.
Okay.
Because it seems to me that there's not a legal paper trail between this and what we have right now, and it concerns me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Maybe while we're looking at that interpretation, the broader question of whether it's time for an update to the ILA should be considered, I, you know, I don't know if it's necessary or not, but it's certainly something that we could.
We'll try, we'll try to get an interpretation for you. An ILA is a two-party consent, so.
Right, yeah.
Okay, Audrey Adams?
Hi, my name's Audrey Adams, and happy to be a citizen of Renton. And you've missed me. I thought you needed a break. You were working on some really important stuff, since I talked to you last. It wasn't that I wasn't dying to talk to you, because I have been dying to talk to you, but you had obviously extremely pressing issues. I have some new information, and because, and of course, as I said in my sign-in sheet, I'm here to talk about fluoride and fluoridation again, and because I know that you would all want new information that was relevant to the medication that you're adding to the water that affects everyone, even those who don't want medications or water, that I thought I'd better bring it forth to you. You may recall that in January, I asked, actually, I asked multiple times, if you would please test the raw product in an independent lab to see what chemicals are actually in it, and the sodium chloride that you receive. And if you could not do that, that if you gave me a sample, I would go have it tested and bear that cost myself, personally. And the reason is, I'm highly skeptical about what they say is in the material and what it actually is. And one of the reasons I want to point out to you is that on the very document itself, the certificate of analysis, it says heavy metals. What is in the heavy metals? Well, in 2007, Utah had a fluoride spill of 2,500 gallons, now it was fluorofluoric acid instead of sodium fluoride, but it's same source essentially, and they found that they were literally getting a whole lot more than they bargained for when they actually tested the raw product. And when they didn't, they, when they compared it to the certificate of analysis, which you get when you buy the stuff from Shanghai Chemical Company, and Univar, and Waco, et cetera, in other words, it didn't match. What they said they were giving to residents in Utah, and water districts and cities in Utah, was not what Utah found when they went to clean up 2,500 gallons of this raw product. Thus, came about House Bill 72 in the State of Utah, which was signed into law by their governor on April 1st, and no, it wasn't an April Fools' joke. And in fact, what this law, what this law says, and I quote, "A public water system described in subsection 8 shall obtain, for each quantity of fluoride acquired to fluoridate public drinking water supplies, a batch-specific certificate of analysis that represents the complete composition of the formulation of the undiluted raw fluoride substance, in percent or parts by weight, for each chemical and contaminant in the batch." Why did they ask for that? Well, because Utah found, when they went to clean up that big accidental fluoride mess, they found arsenic, lead, mercury, aluminum, and beryllium, all of which, when you mix that with fluoride, it becomes especially active and more harmful to human health. It was not disclosed to them, as I suspect may not be disclosed to us. One of the other things they did, in addition to requiring that each, each batch be tested, right? Not some overall, well, this is probably what's in there because somebody tested some batch in Shanghai three months ago. But no, each batch tests, and, and that it must be done before dilution. Well, that's a big, big deal. And then it must be disclosed. And if they are not in compliance, then they have to stop adding it to the water until they become in compliance, and this is only for disclosure of information. It's a big deal to know whether or not lead, and arsenic, and beryllium, and mercury might be in this mix. I'm not saying that it is, but I'm saying, State of Utah did not trust in it, had reason to not trust in it, and I think we don't either. So, I have brought for you a copy of their HB 72 from Utah, and a copy of my request to you on the 29th of January, requesting that you conduct an independent sample. And also, I've brought a copy of the manufacturer's safety data sheet, along with the certificate of analysis on the back, which lumps in just heavy metals. What do they mean? What does heavy metals mean? You deserve to know, I deserve to know, we all deserve to know. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, live in the Renton Highlands.
Oh, the light's flashing red.
Oh dear. Amen.
Just a test.
Okay. Basically, I wanted to say three things. Number one, we have a city of volunteers that are wonderful. I appreciate these folks. Every one of these people are doing this out of their own pocket, free, and I think it's positive, and I think that it's good. I've seen all of you at volunteer outings everywhere, and that's important. I have a new one that I'm working on, which has to do with housing. One of the things that Jay didn't mention in his report, which probably, I'll just say it anyway, we have a ribbon cutting, I think, on the 17th downstairs. I've got it right, and that is for our Center of Hope. I'm part of REACH, REACH with the city, of course, doing our partnership thing. The city has provided part of the jail down there, and we've been hauling stuff out of there. We had Mormon elders, they're young and strong guys, pulling the heavy stuff out and putting it into the things, and Dave has been our project leader, and of course, you know Dr. Smith, who is so sweet and so experienced in this. But what we're doing is providing housing for people who are desperate. When we talk about desperate, Don knows this, and people, in the middle of the night, someone's running with their, with their children, with the clothes on their back, hoping to make it to the police. That's scary. And we didn't really have a place for them to go, and the people came to REACH, and they said, "What can you do?" And we came to you, and you provided the spot, and so we can have a safe daycare center. I can't think of a safer place than a disability right underneath the police department with all those guys with badges and guns. I mean, I think whoever was chasing them won't go there. So we're good. But we have this sort of thing going on. I was a couple of weeks ago with, with Mr. Taylor, down to listening to the people that are worried about homelessness. We have homelessness all over here. It's a housing thing, and it generally has to do with, with just our, our community. We heard this proclamation tonight, and it has to do with people who need help, and so our goal is to help each other. And I think that this is a great city for it, and I am working with the administration, and we're trying to do some housing, some affordable housing in the Highlands, which is my number one area. But I think that we need all these things, we need to continue to work with the volunteers. This city is set up for, and to do positive things, not making noises, is it? Positive things where we can help each other, where we can solve these problems that we have. We have some problems that you need to be solved, and I think we're positive, and I think as we work on it together, we're going to have it. But I, I just think that we have a great volunteer city here, and I think we should, if I were you, I realize this isn't your building, KCLS builds the building, but I think if you put into the little thing. isn't your building. KCS builds the building. But I think if you put into the little thing, you have a senior engineer with all kinds of credentials, who's retired, who has some time on his hands, who's willing to give you free advice and free backup on your thing and give you ideas, it wouldn't be a bad idea. Those are just offers, which you guys look at all the time. But I don't think KCS is so used to having volunteers immediately available. I think that would be good. I think that the water thing is something to look at. I really do. I have absolute faith that the administration's doing the very best job they can. Jay runs a wonderful shop, and people behind me are super. But I think it's just all working together to solve the problems. It's a cooperative effort. And just want to say I'm glad to be in Renton, doing cooperative things, solving the problems that we have here. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have four items for council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like to pull for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, unfinished business. Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I have a Transportation Committee report.
Transportation Aviation Committee report, LED conversion of city-owned streetlights. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment to the interlocal agreement with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services to manage and monitor the conversion of city-owned streetlights to light-emitting diode LED lights pursuant to provisions of the Energy Services Proposal prepared by AmerisCo Quantum Incorporated. The committee recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the funding authorization forms associated with this amendment, and that the administration be authorized to pursue the issuance of a qualified energy conservation bond to provide funding for this project. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business.
Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has several reports.
Finance Committee report, 2013 School District Impact Fees. Excuse me. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to approve interlocal agreements with three school districts, Issaquah, Canton, Renton, to authorize the imposition of school impact fees and adopt the resolution. Additionally, the Finance Committee recommends concurrence with staff recommendation to adopt an ordinance to approve impact fee collection changes in capital facilities plans for three school districts within the city of Renton as follows. Collect the requested impact fee of $3,738, an increase of $170, for each new single-family home on behalf of the Issaquah School District, and continue to collect an impact fee of $5,486 for each new single-family home, and $3,378 for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Kent School District, and collect the requested impact fee of $6,395, an increase of $3, for each new single-family home, and $1,308, an increase of $34, for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Renton School District. The Finance Committee further recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to adopt an ordinance to waive unidentified miscalculations of school impact fee payments unless the payment was paid for under protest. And lastly, the committee recommends that the ordinances regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee vice chair and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee report, Iron Mountain Lease Amendment. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a two-year lease amendment with Iron Mountain Information Management Incorporated for continued tenancy of 14,208 square feet of the fourth floor of Renton City Hall, 1055 South Grady Way, Renton. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the lease amendment. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee report, LED Streetlight Conversion Financing Plan. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation for the issuance of $3.2 million in 15-year qualified energy conservation bonds with direct federal credit payments to the city to offset interest costs for the purpose of financing the conversion of approximately 3,900 high-pressure sodium HBS streetlights to light-emitting dialed LED lights. The bonds will be issued through private placement with terms substantially the same as presented in the term sheet titled "Transaction Terms, Renton, Washington, QECB 42213." Excuse me. The committee further recommends that the enabling ordinance for the bond issuance be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer.
Mr. Mayor, just before that, just a clarification for the...
Let me put it on the, I've got a, first by Ms. Breyer and a second by Mr. Person to approve the Finance Committee report. Go ahead, Mr. Person.
Just for clarification for the public that's watching, is it, this was both in the Transportation Committee and the Finance Committee. It is the same issue, but because it dealt with a transportation issue, the Transportation Committee took a long look at it some time ago. And then now, when it comes to the actual, the bond, getting ready to where we're going to do the bonds, and that becomes a Finance Committee issue. So, the two will kind of, will be merged. And while it sounds like a lot of money, the savings of $270,000 a year on a light bill will more than pay for this conversion over the 15-year period, including any interest payments. And there's also a rebate from the federal government because we're doing this in the way of the interest and stuff. And it is a very complicated issue. And also, just a couple side notes on this, is that it is a public safety issue as well. It was brought up, because this is going to be a white light now instead of the yellow light. So, if somebody says, "I saw this red car underneath it," it'll be truly red. Whereas, I mean, I thought it was an orange car. So, with that, I just wanted to explain that so the public doesn't look like we were, we didn't know what we were doing. But we're just being very careful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Person. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, that's it for finance, huh?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Swicker?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Community Services has a couple of committee reports.
Community Services Committee report, Renton Municipal Arts Commission Appointment. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Law's appointment of Mr. Mitch Shepherd to the Renton Municipal Arts Commission for an unexpired term expiring December 31, 2015. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I'd like to move that the council concur with the Community Services Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. ...
I'd also like to move that we suspend the rules and advance this to second and final reading at tonight's council meeting.
Let's see, do we...
I believe Mr. Taylor's referring to the next committee report for the park rules. So, probably we should adopt first the report.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you for the correction.
I'll go ahead. Let's see, we, so we have the second committee report?
Yes, the Community Services Committee report regarding park rules and regulation revisions. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff and park board of commissioners' recommendation that the existing city of Renton park rules and regulations be amended to include the addition of definitions, clarify existing rules, identify new rules that address changing operations and activities, and authorize the enforcement of the regulations. The Community Services Committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that council, that we suspend the rules and move this reading to second and final reading at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we suspend the rules and move this ordinance to second and final reading this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Excuse me, Madam Clerk, do we need to redo the first reading?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I will read the ordinance for first and second reading, I believe, for the ordinance on the park rules and regulations code amendment. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 2-9-6 of chapter nine, park commission of title two, commissions and boards, section 10, 610-1 of chapter 10, criminal code, and section 61820 of chapter 18, penal code, of title six, police regulations of Renton municipal code by adding a new section to 98 entitled "Park Rules and Regulations", adding a new subsection 6101F, adopting by reference city of Renton park rules and regulations, and repealing section 61820 park rules and regulations violations.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that this ordinance be advanced to second and final reading tonight's council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
For second and final reading, an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 296 of chapter nine, park commission of title two, commissions and boards, section 6101 of chapter 10, criminal code, and section 61820 of chapter 18, penal code, of title six, police regulations of city code by adding a new section to 98 entitled "Park Rules and Regulations", adding a new subsection 6101F, adopting by reference city of Renton park rules and regulations, and repealing section 61820 park rules and regulations violations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read. It requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, one thing that I did miss, we, in bringing on our new Renton Municipal Arts Commissioner, Mr. Mitch Shepherd, he's here in the audience tonight. I like to bring him up, but I also like to just say a couple of things about him first. For those who don't know, that he was born, and, well, first and foremost, he's our 13th Commissioner. And it just so happened to be May 13, 2013, so I think it's fitting that, you know, we do this business tonight. But he's born and raised here in the area. He went off to get his education in New York, where he studied film, and he decided to come back into the community. He's a two-time Renton Film Frenzy winner, and now he's ready to get back to the community. Local boy done good, come home, share his talents. Let's bring up Mr. Mitch Shepherd, our latest 13th, lucky 13th Commissioner.
Welcome, Mitch, and congratulations.
Good evening, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. Yes, I made the observation myself. 13th day, 13th year, and 13th Commissioner, I think. That precedes any bad luck that may be associated. Time will tell. I just wanted to say again, thank you very much. It's my pleasure to serve the commission in any capacity that I am capable. The arts are very important to me, and local arts are also, arts in the community are immensely important. Any way that I can give back, I am at your service.
Well, we appreciate it, Mitch. Mitch has also been serving on the SIF committee, and so, we appreciate your volunteer service.
Thank you.
I can't even pick up your accent anymore, Mitch. You really settled in nicely.
I've been working to get rid of it just for this.
Really, very well done. Well done, sir.
I slip into it now.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances. We have two resolutions, and we, two ordinances for first reading and one ordinance for second and final.
The first is, resolution regards the interlocal agreement with Fire District 40. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal cooperative agreement with King County Fire District 40, amending CAG 08015 addressing the project management of the demolition of Fire Station 42.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Swicker, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution regards the imposition of school district impact fees. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the imposition of school impact fees on new growth and development activity for the purpose of having that new growth and development pay its proportionate share of the costs of new facilities required based on that new growth and development, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into interlocal agreements with school districts operating within the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Swicker, that council concur with the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The resolution first for first reading regards school district impact fee code amendment and adoption of plans. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 4-1-160 of chapter one, administration and enforcement of title four development regulations of city code, setting the impact fee at $3,738 per new single-family home in the Issaquah School District, retaining the impact fee of $5,486 per new single-family home, and $3,378 per new multifamily home in the Kent School District, setting the impact fee at $6,395 per new single-family home, and $1,308 per new multifamily home in the Renton School District, and adopting the capital facility plans of the Issaquah, Canton, and Renton school districts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with this ordinance.
See, you want...
Oh, I'm sorry. And advanced to second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next ordinance for first reading regards the LED streetlight conversion project financing. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 4-1-160 of chapter one, administration and enforcement of title four development regulations of... I probably read that wrong. This is on the, on the school district impact fees. I'm sorry. Okay, let's do it again. One ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 4-1-160 of chapter one, administration and enforcement of title four development regulations of city code, adding a new subsection 4-1160E4 regarding school impact fee waiver, payment upon, under protest and appeals.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And now the ordinance for first reading regarding the LED project financing. A city of Renton, Washington, limited tax general obligation bond 213 taxable direct pay qualified energy conservation bond, an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the sale and issuance of a limited tax general obligation bond of the city in the principal amount not to exceed $3,200,000 for the purpose of financing streetlight improvements as part of a green community program, providing the form of the bond and authorizing the sale of the bond.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And lastly, the ordinance for second and final reading regarding the entertainment device license fee amendments. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 48110 of chapter eight permits general and appeals of title four development regulations, chapter one fee schedule, section 571 of chapter seven, entertainment device tax, and chapter eight gambling tax of title five, finance and business regulations of city code, renaming chapter one, definitions and fee schedule, adding definitions for... definitions for Title V, adding a section 512 Fee Schedule adopted, renumbering Sections 518 Airport Fuel Flowage Fees as 513, eliminating Sections 514 through 519, renaming Chapter 7 as Entertainment Device License, revising the definition of entertainment device, and amending regulations regarding entertainment device license fees and gambling taxes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Bonnie. Moving on to doing business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to announce that committed a whole meeting next week, May 20. The meeting is 6:00 PM in the... Is that still going to be in the 7th floor conferencing center?
Yes. I would... Mr. Mayor, I would recommend, if it's okay with Council President, that we move that meeting to council chambers.
It's okay with me. Jay, I heard some dialogue. Are you all right with that?
I think Councilman Taylor and I spoke a little bit about this. I think it's a presentation by the county, so I don't know that there... How much... The conferencing center always lends itself a little more exchange, but on the other hand, here in the council chambers, if it's a presentation, it's taped, and so people can view in and see it, so it's really up to the council. We're fine with it either way.
And Mr. President, and one of the thoughts was that, being that it's on the subject of something that, you know, we're interested in, thought it might be good for the public to see that we're having this discourse, that we're having this dialogue regarding, you know, how we learn about biases that relates to hiring in our workforce.
Well, that maybe private employers that are watching might learn something for themselves as well.
Absolutely.
I think I'm okay having that in the council chambers. It seems reasonable. So, okay, so that meeting will take place here in council chambers, again, 6:00 PM, committed a whole, and one item on that agenda, and it's a King County presentation on cultural awareness in hiring practices. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
No new business, Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee meeting for next week is canceled.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no committees report, but I did want to mention, had an opportunity Saturday to attend the Piazza Spring Festival and the Rely on Renton Family Fair. It was a perfect day for it, the weather, and it's just great to see an existing group like the Piazza partnering with a new group like Rely on Renton. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Prince. It was a perfect day for that. Okay, Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee is going to meet on Monday, May 20, and because the Public Safety meeting has been canceled, I wondered if we couldn't start the Finance Committee at 5:30 until 6:00. And we have three items, vouchers, surface water maintenance workers position conversion, and emerging issues in revenue streams, and that's a briefing. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Swicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting on Monday, May 20 at 9:00 AM in the council conference room. We have two items on that agenda, Benson Hill Community Plan, and a second item, Docket Number 9 briefing. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had the privilege of attending a wonderful event last week. It was called a community gathering regarding changing demographics in the Seattle metropolitan region. It was hosted by the Seattle City Club, the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, the Seattle Foundation, and an organization called the Generations Initiative. Their purpose is to acquire an understanding of the degree to which community and civic leaders are aware of, experiencing, and addressing the changing demographics in the Seattle metropolitan region, and what challenges and what successes are in front of us. And one of the things that really was interesting is their awareness of a divide that exists between our youth and our seniors, and how there is an interrelated connection in terms of youth, education, employment, that fuels the prosperity of our aging population, and also the correlation with the benefit that our seniors provide to our youth as well. And they're trying to create a framework of discourse that can really bridge a divide that has been recognized along those lines. A very impressive group of organizations attended that event. There's about 65 different organizations from the county to the... Someone from the Bellevue Mayor's Office, Boeing, Casey Family Foundation, Community Center for Education, El Centro de la Raza, First Place. It's a number of individuals who were there, so there was some very rich discourse. They are going to continue some follow-up on this, and the whole idea is that we can frame a conversation that will create some real robust engagement between our youth and our seniors that will benefit all of our communities, and it was a great event. Also, I got an email from a citizen, a resident by the name of Stan Calamoto, and if it's okay with Don Person, we can either refer this into Public Safety or we can refer it to the administration, but it's regarding the intersection on Duval near the crossing area, over near 4th and 900th on Duval, where they've got that crossing area. I hear there's a lot of speeding going on there. He's got more details here in his letter, so I'd like to refer this... Would you like to score on Public Safety, Don, or...
Why don't we just refer it to the administration? They do a really good job of taking care of things like that.
They will do that, then. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Moving on to new... Oh, excuse me, we did doing business. Audience comment, is there anybody who didn't have a chance to address the council?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Kathy Ozenkop, Renton resident of 40 years, and I'm interested in the auditor selection to review the spending of Renton taxpayer dollars by King County Library System. An auditor was promised by the Renton administration two weeks ago at this... One of these meetings. I'm interested in learning the progress in the selection of an auditor and said auditor's credentials in association with construction practices. My focus is seeing the potential for full square footage build-out of the current library to maintain its size for the Renton citizens. The value of this full size is directly related to serving the needs of the citizens. It was Mr. Person who mentioned importance for the handicapped to have satisfactory entrance. This same importance comes as all citizens use the interior area of the library facility. The interior area full space is essential to accommodate those with assistive devices as they mingle with other library patrons, whether it be in the children's area, the adult section, the computer use section, or the meeting room facility. And just let your mind travel as you meet on the streets of Renton, in the markets of Renton, in the shopping centers of Renton, with people who have assistive devices, be it walking or motorized, or be it the motorized grocery cart. And think to yourself how much extra space you as a person with two feet need to walk around that person with that device. And think of that person, one person, and the others mingling in the library with stacks of books. And then think of the... In the children's section, and you have two, three, four with motorized carts, or the child on a flatbed cart, or the child with an IV machine hooked up to him who's on cancer treatments, using our facilities, coming to our programs. We need a full-size facility. Our area is not getting smaller with people who have these devices. Our area is getting bigger. Take a walk through Children's Orthopedic Hospital if you want to see how people manage with assistive devices, or walk into the Renton Hospital section. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move, will you adjourn?
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Swicker, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.